Welcome Commissioner Willie, welcome Diane. So Madam Chair, we are in the one minute warning and ready to get started at eight thirty when you are.
Okay. Everybody ready to go? Okay, well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. First item on the agenda is Board and Leadership Communication. Who from the Board would like to go first? Oh, we're such an eager bunch today.
I'll go first. I think we're all exhausted, just so many meetings. It's getting to be overwhelming. Yesterday I started eleven and got done about seven o'clock. Had WCCC bring back two pieces of information. One, the new Chair of WCCC is Jeff Delane, Mayor of Cornelius. The Vice Chair is Frank Bubinick, Mayor of Twalton. So I wish them well. I know they'll do great. The big item discussed with the MSTIP. It changes. They approved that, those changes with caveats that there's a lot of terms that need to be defined, definitions, and so there's concern. It's we're in a period of time of trust but verify, and so I hope the Board responds well to them in terms, and the staff, in terms of their information needs. Last night was the ODOT Region One meeting. I started it pre-meeting at about what was it, three thirty, then we went into the meeting at four, but, and we went on. It was a tolling. I have the same concerns personally. I don't know where the Board is, but as Paul Savas said, which is true, the whole support that we've given to the two oh five in years past has been that bottlenecks that need to be resolved. The tolling congestion pricing, they're now terming it, is simply not going to correct that. It's talking about no, no lane additions, no changes, and with, with additional tolls. So what I've been telling folks that I've been dealing with is that, you know, monitored closely, our businesses in Washington County, our citizens in Washington County, are going to be paying tolls for exactly zero improvements so far. It's going to simply take and pay for mitigation of moving traffic off of I-205 to surface streets everywhere else. And so what they're buying, they're concerned about. And so the conversation, we added five members from Clark County to a kind of a steering group. They all had about the same questions. So you're getting it from Hood River, Clackamas, me from Washington County, and you got Clark County all saying, it kind of shows the beef, if any of you are old enough to remember that, what's in it for people? And so we just need to monitor, be careful. It's, hopefully it'll work itself out, but that's where it's at at this point. So that's my report. Other than I didn't get range to have, they're asking what meetings I have. I can tell you, I started at nine o'clock yesterday. I might have to bug out a little bit this afternoon. I have a tax season that ends tomorrow for all corporations. I'm working hellacious hours and I need to get a little of that work done, but I didn't get my list in because Mondays are not good, so we're arranging the Thursday. When I'm meeting with facilities, I'm meeting after the day with Jerry and I know Diane on her contract. Chair and I have worked that down, so I think that's in pretty good shape, but she's doing two-on-twos now, I guess. Facilities tomorrow, I've got jail, I've got a whole bunch of things this week. So anyway, we're in. That's me.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Anyone else? Not required. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Well, good morning, Chair. Yeah, I guess a few things to report. First, I think I was able to go tour the Forest Grove and the Forest Grove's Turnkey Project and met with a couple of representatives from Central Culturelle, including, of course, Maria Caballero Rubio, the Executive Director, Mayor Truex, and several other people. They were showing me not only what it looks like right now, but then some design plans for what they're going to need to remodel. And it's going to be, it's going to be a spectacular looking facility when they get all done with it. So it was very interesting. They have families that are in, of course, bridge housing right there, and they have eleven children in the facility. So it's a pretty active environment there. So, and it's working very, very well. They're doing a great job. Also had some conversations regarding the Highway forty-seven encampment. And some of the things that they would like to, I guess, partner up with the county on running that or managing that facility or that encampment, I guess is a better word for it, just because there's, they're, they're really embracing that, that camp. So that's a good thing. As a community, they, of course, have some issues and concerns, and so they're going to need to be working with the county moving ahead. So that was encouraging, and I certainly encourage them to continue doing that since we don't have many cities and organizations willing to kind of take on the responsibilities for in these encampments. So that's a good sign. And thank you to Commissioner Treese for introducing me to the Professional Business Development Group, the PBBG. It was, it was really good to hear more about that organization, certainly the availability of women-owned construction businesses, and we're certainly going to need that as we move ahead on all of our affordable housing projects, just because we have those minimum standards for minority and women-owned businesses. So that was encouraging, really a very nice group of a couple of ladies that I met with. And so thank you again, Pam. That was, that was a great introduction. Also got updated on, from the fair last week at the Fair Board Meeting. We have heard lots of feedback from 4H and the horse organizations. And so we have some work to do there to bridge some relationships, make sure that going ahead, we can facilitate all of their needs. And certainly it was kind of a blend of concerns and requests that crossed over from the Fair Board responsibilities to the County Commission Fairgrounds responsibilities. So, so clarifying kind of a who's on first situation, but I will, I will be reaching out to Tanya and certainly to Leah and others to pull together a meeting so we can have those conversations, get clarification, and also really work harder on mending that relationship. We need these agriculture and youth groups to make our affair successful every year, and that's been, I don't go for the carnival rides for obvious reasons, but I certainly go to see all of the animals and see how the kids work. So as we get out of this pandemic and we can get back to normal operations, I think that'll be what we'll be working on over the next year for the twenty twenty-two fair. And then Culpac and Northwest Act was last week as well. There was, it was a great discussion with ODOT's representatives. And primarily, I think, Tillamook County folks. Highway six has a couple of significant issues. One is, a few weeks ago, there were two fatal accidents on the same day. And so they have some, certainly some safety issues there that they're trying to deal with, very difficult to do that. And then they have, of course, there's, there's dead spots in there for communication, so you can't use cellphone or any of the things that we may need for any accidents. And then they also have a portion of Highway six that for years and years has been trying to slide into the canyon. And so they're trying all kinds of methods to, of course, shore that up, and that's been their top priority versus trying to fix some of the safety areas and passing lanes on that highway. And one other thing is, two other things. One is, today at ten o'clock, I'm going to jump off of this meeting and join the broadband advisory team meeting through Culpac to get an update on our consulting agreement and see where they are. That will be, that will be an hour or so. I will be back at eleven o'clock. And then lastly, as I listened in to the WCCC meeting yesterday, and certainly on the MSTIP discussion, and I appreciate all of the mayors and certainly Roy voicing their concerns, and you've got to give kudos to Stephen and Chris on this. They, they've been thrown a little bit of a curveball. I think they thought they were going to be moving down a little bit further down the road, but they've taken this on and realized some of the communication needs and some of the concerns of the group, and so they're going to meet those. And so thank you very much, Stephen and Chris, for stepping up and, and participating in that and certainly answering all those questions. And then, of course, the last part of the WCCC meeting was Roy's swan song, so to speak. Every, all the mayors had to roast him just a little bit, but also show a lot of appreciation for the years and years and years, and then some more years of work that he has put in on that, on that committee. And certainly all the good things that have come out of that, Roy, we've got lots of the good roads and certainly lots of things to be in the transportation arena to be thankful for, and you're a critical part of that history. And so thank you from, from me and from, I'm sure, the commission saying, thank you for all your years on the WCCC. And we'll certainly see where else we can plug you in, but as the mayor said, you've got a whole file cabinet there up in your head of, of history and information that they're still going to be pulling on when the need arises. So don't plan on going too far, but thank you, Roy. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Anyone else? Commissioner Treese, go ahead.
Good morning. As I mentioned earlier, I may have to go off camera and I'll be muted because my roof is being replaced. So as you all know, that can be kind of noisy. The, I'm going to, I'm going to go backwards first and then forwards. We had a meeting last week, both Commissioner Fai and myself, with Family Forward, talking about daycare-related issues. I was surprised to learn that the money from the state is only dedicated toward existing daycare centers. So we were, we talked about that. We also, and their request was that the, if, whether or not the county would consider a broader perspective as, as we look at ARPA dollars. The other piece was, they asked that we let Senator Lieber know, we met with Senator Lieber the next day and, and informed her, we're doing the background work right now, and she'll be receiving a memo as to what that actually means. I attended the Central Culturelle Board Meeting. I attended the Maxine Dexter's, Representative Dexter's redistricting meeting on Monday night, or it was a town hall. Was, it was very interesting. The, and she basically asked for testimony and, and input from her community at large regarding the redistricting and what's important. Sarah Beechey did testify on behalf of the Bethany area and did a good, a really good job. The, I attended yesterday the AOC meetings along with the Chair. I'll, Chair, I'll defer to you for a report out on that. It was, it was challenging in some respects. I'll just put it that way. So more, more to follow up there. Last night was the CPO seven meeting, and originally, it's kind of a long convoluted story, but originally the Chair and I were, through our respective offices, were looking for opportunities to have the Chair attend different CPO meetings. We, we were looking at CPO seven. There was a scheduling snafu, and the, the, the original communication came out from CPO seven that the Chair would be there. It wasn't scheduled that way. So I took the lead on it last night with Stephen Roberts. The focus was mainly on Saltzman Road. Although they did, they did vote to send a support letter for the Board's position on Kenny Terrace, and there was a discussion about that. So that will be coming to us. They put together a letter in support of the Western Alignment that was voted on. There was a lot of discussion there. It was voted on. There were twenty-one people that voted in support and five people that voted against the letter. So there's still a lot of discussion that's going on in the community about those two options moving forward, but it was, it was a very good discussion. Andrew Lampkin, the Chair, led it, led it, very positive meeting, and Mary Manso was integral in making sure that information was getting to, to the group. So I was, I was very impressed with that, and Stephen Roberts did a great job. I'm appreciative that he was there to be able to provide background information, maps, that type of thing for clarity. Tonight, I go to the Beaverton City Council Meeting, and that's going to be focused on MSTIP. I've been working with Chris Defaba and with Stephen Roberts on that script. We're, we're ready for this evening. Tomorrow night is Community Action Board Meeting. I didn't realize this was a night job, by the way, but just, just, you know, just putting that out there. The, the CIO meeting is tomorrow night, and I'm looking forward to that. And then on Thursday is the PAB meeting, the PAB focus for that will be the caper that I can never remember. The other thing I just want to mention, I, I'm sure you're all seeing the same thing I'm seeing. The need to, if you're using Apple products, the need to do an update. I wouldn't, you know, make sure that, I'm sure IT will come out and let us know that. The other little, little hint is that I met with Angie last week. I am using the office.com platform for my, for interaction through the internet because our VPN apparently sucks out a lot of internet space and makes it a little bit more unstable. So if you're having stability issues on the internet, I would encourage you to talk with Angie about that process. It seems to be working well for me over the last few days. So little, little, little update from Pam on IT issues. You know, never trust me a whole bunch on IT issues, but maybe just a little.
That's great. Commissioner Fai.
Good morning. That was quite the update. Thank you, Pam. Last week, I was busy with some internal briefings and I'll tie constituent meetings with Pam and other, or legislative delegates from Washington County. And I also met for the first time Kerry Lennon. So that was a really good meeting. I went to North Plains for the first time. And we're scheduling a tour of the city. That was really fun, and it's a very quiet city. I didn't realize. We were meeting outside a coffee place, and I kept, it, it just felt like very quiet city. And then this week, I have a very busy week. One thing I want to draw your attention to is the J-PAC meeting that's happening this Thursday. One of the things that we're going to be voting on is the congestion pricing study that was done a while back. So this is your last chance as Washington County Board of Commissioners, if you have any concerns, to let me know so that I can take that concern back and, and see what wins we can get. We are voting to accept the findings and the recommendations this meeting on Thursday. And then the other thing on the agenda is working an update, legislative update on the House Bill thirty-five-five. So if you have any burning questions that you'd like to raise at that level, please send me and Chris and Brenda to ask those questions and concerns. And then the other thing that we're getting is the regional work, safety work update. So I think that one I'll bring back next week and see what, what we talk about and what updates that are relevant and tech team with Chris and really bring back the pieces that are very relevant to our Washington County. And, and then this week I also have District One Town Hall happening, and the theme this month is to talk about the Aloha Study, the Aloha Refill Study, and then Aloha Tomorrow Plan. Just to get an update on where we are with that, and, and I'll keep you updated on that next week, what we, what comes out of that town hall. It's been really fun and interesting and learning for all of us, the constituents and my, my office. That's all I have. And yes, I think I would love to hear your take on that AOC meeting yesterday, Chair Harrington. I really loved your question that you posed to the group, and I think it was very well received, and even some counties that are very problematic on that, AOC even appreciated that question. So I thought that was a really good question, and, and it sounds like there's some actions that are going to be taken on, so I would love to put that question here too, so that everybody hears. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone. Of, I'll dive in with some updates from me. So last week, I stepped away from work starting on Wednesday morning. So the rest of the week was pretty quiet for me, but it means that I missed a few opportunities that I had previously planned on, the WEA Government Relations Committee meeting where Aaron Doyle and others were presenting the Washington County Audit Committee, and then a whole host of different one-on-ones and briefings. Yes, indeed, this week has, has kicked off with a busy tone already, as both Commissioner Fai and Commissioner Treese mentioned. Yesterday was AOC Day. Well, some of, at least two of the Steering Committee meetings meet on different days now, which gives more commissioners the opportunity to participate in at least three Steering Committee meetings that happen on Monday. They've removed overlap. So yesterday, I participated, as usual, in the Public Safety Steering Committee meeting where on the agenda was, well, on the fourth agenda was discussion of county declarations of emergency, noting that with vaccination mandates that various employees, both of county government and then in education and public health, might be departing their, their jobs over that. So the, the question that Commissioner Fai was getting at, well, I'm getting a little ahead of myself. The Public Safety Steering Committee then took a vote on making a recommendation for support behind those county-specific emergency declarations. And due to time constraints, we didn't have much time to discuss it. So that was a little disappointing. So then it went to the Legislative Committee. We had more time for discussion there. And as a result, we went back to a prior position of, look, why are we focusing on these, these topics that tend to divide us as an organization versus sticking to those things that are very significant issues of common concern that we need to work on? So there was a motion to table it, and that, that moved forward. The question that I asked, that Commissioner Fai mentioned is, I mentioned that I was interested in learning from our county colleagues across the state and from public health about how we can seize control from the virus. And I was wondering how we might go about that. So so that question is still out there. President Cribbins is going to be meeting with AOC staff and pulling together a forum for all of us to participate if we would like to share some learnings and to see what we might do in order to, instead of being controlled by the state of the virus, to instead figure out how we're going to seize control over, over our lives as we continue to live forward with this virus present in our communities. From the Legislative Committee and the Regional Solutions Presentation that happens with each AOC Day, a question came up from Regional Solutions with regard to the ARPA funding. And I had lost sight that for ARPA funding, the state received all of the funding all at once, as opposed to having two tranches. And so Regional Solutions is asking of their eight Regional Solutions Team, they're asking each county, what projects do you have to take advantage of the infrastructure aspect of the ARPA funding? So it was interesting for me as the Board Representative to the Metro Area Regional Solutions Committee to hear that Metro Solutions is supposed to be following up and asking us this question, but instead I was hearing it at the state level. But that's okay, hearing the question nonetheless. So I need to convene with Ms. Angie and staff to see if we have any good answers to that question. If there's good money to, to leverage between now and the end of twenty twenty-four, let's try to not leave money on the table. So at this, oh, a couple of other things from the AOC Board of Directors Meeting. There's some further work being done on agreements to finalize AOC moving out of a co-owned building and next door to a building that AOC would build outright. So part of the, the process has been working on parking options. And so we had an executive session on that. And then from that, then recommended that the Executive Director move forward with discussions with Oregon School Board Association on a parking agreement. So all is well otherwise. It's still, everyone is still hopeful that the AOC Conference in November down in Eugene will be in person. Also, they're moving forward with trying to set up the October AOC Day as a hybrid, meaning again, versus just the entirely virtual one we had yesterday. Commissioner Treese, did you have a question? Or did I miss something?
Well, it's not a question, Chair. I just, I, I really would like to just point out that the, you did a great job in your points as You did a great job in your points as Commissioner Phi said. Uh, but I think it was interesting that the vote table was uh nineteen to eighteen. And I think that that's that's interesting information for all of us. It really, it really uh underscores the need for. Us at AOC to focus on what we what we agree upon, not what divides us. So I I just wanted to point out that that piece.
Yeah, so um, we have a District Eight meeting coming up on September twenty eighth. And uh, as you know, Commissioner Therese has been the Vice, is it Vice Chair? Uh, for District Eight and organizing that. Uh, we as uh. The Washington County Board of Commissioners should probably spend a little bit of time. Uh, in our meeting, the twenty first or the twenty eighth, to look at the various AOC. Uh, positions and opportunities for representation. Uh, as you know. Being prior to July, being the only full-time member of the Board of Washington County Commissioners. I did my best to participate in one Steering Committee this year and but consistently. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and now twenty twenty one uh. As the Board's Representative to the Legislative Committee and the Board of Directors. There are leadership opportunities with each of the Steering Committee meetings as well that then gets. Leadership or a a membership opportunity at the Legislative Committee. So um. Multnomah County has totally uh uh worked that system very well. And uh, under the prior Chair of the Clackamas County Board. Uh, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners also had four of their five members active. Now it's it's just two of the four. So that's something we should think about. Uh, as as we look towards twenty twenty two and it it will come up. Uh, at the District Eight meeting on the twenty ninth, Wednesday, the twenty ninth. So. Uh, I'll ask Brenda S. to help send the roster around so that we can get on that. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Therese, for uh covering the CPO seven meeting last night on Salzman Road. I really appreciate that. Uh, later this afternoon, uh, I was asked to uh participate with the Beaverton Committee on Aging. So I'll be doing that. Tomorrow, uh, there was supposed to be a here-together meeting with the. Three county chairs and another commissioner. Well, just before this meeting, there was a a bit of a. Text message thread. And so Pam, Commissioner Therese, we are hereby released from that meeting. It's now canceled. Yeah, it's something was a little strange there. Um.
Excuse me, was there a reason for the cancellation or not? Not really. Uh, we can discuss it later too.
It's a little odd, which is what I was just gonna get to. Um, so um, with. With Kevin Looper's um acting as a principal in some new. Uh, People for Portland effort uh here together and Wheelhouse have separated. Um, and then the three chairs learned. Yesterday, as we discussed last night in our weekly call, that um for the SHS. IGA, uh, there's uh mediation going on. And we're like, uh, that seems a little premature because we haven't been given the IGA's yet. So um, right before our work session started, Council President Peterson. Metro Council President Peterson texted me about canceling the meeting. So I, which. The three tri-chairs, tri-county chairs agreed last night, we'd press on. Um, and so I checked in with the the two other chairs real quick on that. So. Somebody decided to cancel the meeting and that'll be that. Who knows at this stage? All is a little confusing. Uh, so. A little bit of time freed up tomorrow. It had gone from being face-to-face to virtual to now not at all. So, who knows? Uh, Thursday morning uh will be the Washington County Visitors Association Board of Directors Meeting. Uh, then you may all recall that we have our annual Washington County Board of Commissioners Jail Tour. But this year it'll be virtual. So I'm not sure how that'll go. Uh, if they're gonna take a laptop and walk us around or. Or what? Um, then the, there is a Steering Committee meeting for the the CAT, the Center for. Addiction Treatment and Triage and Treatment. And I've got a bunch of briefings, just like you all do. On facilities planning and the tobacco business. And then don't forget, we have our Q three. Town Hall this Saturday at ten AM. So hopefully you've all seen the information for that with the theme. Uh, the topic theme of our ARPA framework. So um. You know, really, I just can't compliment our staff enough across the board. Uh, but also in uh including. Our agencies uh really pulling together in bringing forward the ARPA framework that we approved last week. Uh, you know, this whole um COVID business continues to be a very interesting journey. And our team continues to step up to the challenge to figure out how we support. Our community while uh facing the challenges of living with this virus. But also how to support our businesses and employment to really get our economy back on track. So kudos to our staff. And uh, I want to make sure both today as well as next week. On camera that I I or we make a point to celebrate the fact. That the Washington County community succeeded in reaching a major milestone on vaccinations. Of eighty percent of our community members uh getting vaccinated. Now, I I know that's just the first shot. Uh, and there's still some more work to to be done to get eighty percent fully vaccinated. But it's because of great efforts by our public health team, by the Washington County Medical Reserve Corps. By uh all of the partnerships that our staff have with different organizations throughout our community. The health provider network, uh EMTs from different uh fire districts. So really great work. Really great work. So I think that's it for me. Uh, Commissioner Phi and Commissioner Therese. Did I remember to hit all the highlights from AOC or or other meetings? Great. Thank you for that. Alrighty, uh, were there any questions on any of the territory I I went over? Okay, thanks very much, everyone. So unless any last contributions before we turn it over to leadership communication. Now, seeing none, we'll turn it over to you, Ms. Angie.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. Uh, the Board has absolutely been busy. I do want to flag just upcoming agendas. Through the end of October are full, so we are pushing out agenda items uh further. Um, so just heads up on that. Um, since we do have a lot of meaty um topics to discuss. It is recognized that uh full days can get exhausting for all of us, right? And we don't always do our best um thinking and. Uh, ability to have robust conversations. So we are being mindful um of that and you'll see that when you do uh receive the next. Pecan of rolling agendas. I do want to provide a couple of clarifications. Uh, Chair Harrington, you are absolutely correct. Over the next two days, the staff of the three counties, in addition to Metro, will be convening to negotiate the IGA's. This was a planned negotiation. There is a facilitator to help guide the conversation. Uh, a trained facilitator helps mediate when there are maybe thorny issues, but there's a distinct difference between mediation. And facilitation. So um, after uh these two days, it's hopeful that then um. Staff can bring forward the IGA for or consideration um thereafter. So I did want to provide the clarification on language. Uh, Commissioner Therese, you had raised uh childcare. Um, the county uh uh ARPA allocation, which the Board. Approved does include grants for existing and new childcare providers. Uh, part of um. The intent is understanding that our childcare childcare providers were significantly impacted through the pandemic. And also we do have a childcare desert. And so we do want to make sure that not only are we taking care of our existing. But helping build that future capacity. And Commissioner Therese, I see your hand up.
And thank you for that clarification on the county dollars. Uh, when I, when we talked to Senator Lieber, she was not aware. Of the limitations on the state dollars. So I appreciate for the clarification, but I want to make sure that. Everybody understands why we are getting that information back to her. Thank you.
And Chair, did you have a question on that as well? Okay, okay. Um, relative to COVID cases, I do have a um some good news. Um, our employee. Uh, case count has gone down significantly. Uh, we currently have one COVID positive case and eight. Close contact cases of uh quarantine. That is over half of where we were last last week. So that is good news. On uh Friday, I did send the Board updated vaccination uh status with uh, which puts. Our employee vaccinations at seventy six point four percent, um, which is really exciting to see that growth. That is about a five percent increase um over this last month. Um, so I would put that in the very hopeful um category. And I will complete my staff update uh with that information because there are three letters uh for board consideration in the board packet. Chair, would you like?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we turn to those letters now? So uh, I assume that everyone has the the latest packet that includes the three different letters. I better open it myself uh right now. To make sure I step through it in order. So the first one is in response to a letter that we received. Uh, as pulled together by Representative Dacia Graber with regard to uh asking us. To uh consider the um type of emergency rental assistance. Uh, support that Multnomah County has had in place. So our government relations team. Will be coming back to us on Tuesday, September twenty first. And so the response letter is just sharing with them. What our next step is. And I assume that um in advance of that. Meeting that uh. Multnomah County has done an ordinance and I assume that for us to do something similar on a timely manner. It would need to be an emergency ordinance that would require a unanimous approval. But go ahead, Mr. Carr.
That's correct, Chair. We plan to have in your packet for the twenty first uh two alternative versions of the ordinance, one emergency and one a first reading. If there are five votes, you could pass the emergency ordinance uh to, and what the ordinance would do is extend the period. Through which an eviction could not occur from sixty days, which was the, set the the standard in Senate Bill two seventy eight, to ninety days. For people who have applied for assistance.
Okay, well, we'll wait for further details uh until that September twenty first packet is available to us. So, okay, so uh Commissioners, are you comfortable with this response letter for our signatures? Or any questions? Okay, great. So um, we got five thumbs on that one. The next letter is. With regard to broadband. And uh, you may recall that we received a letter from Commissioner. Representative Courtney Phi. No, good grief, Courtney Neron. You didn't know you had a sister there, Nafisa. Boy, I really bollixed that one up, didn't I? So anyway, in response to a letter from Commissioner uh. Representative Courtney Neron. I'm switching between two screen, uh, two windows and I'm totally confusing myself. So anyway, um, so this is uh just letting them know that we have committed funds from our ARPA. Uh, tranche one in order to put together a county-wide strategic plan for broadband. Is everybody okay with that? Terrific. Alrighty, and now for the third uh. Senator Ron Wyden uh has uh pushed forth a piece of legislation. The State and Local Digital Service Act of twenty twenty one. Uh, this was discussed at AOC yesterday. Of the Ledge Committee and the Board of Directors. Actually, well, anyway, so. It's, it's actually, there was some fun conversation about enabling uh local jurisdictions to put together. Their own digital strike teams. So recognizing that technology has moved quickly. There are uh our various groups out there doing nefarious things and we in government. Um, may not have as many resources as we need in order to protect our very important public systems. So uh, this is a letter in support of that act. So. Is everybody okay with the letter? I see all head nods and thumbs up. Great. Okay, so we got all three letters uh agreed upon. So. Um, anything else, Ms. Angie?
No, I think that's plenty for today.
Okey-dokey, Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, as you all know, uh, on Friday, the President uh issued an order. Uh, well, a a statement about potential that vaccination requirements. There are two that might affect the county. And I just wanted to give you a little heads up. We'll provide more information in the packet for the twenty first. The first is the, there's a mandate for employers of. More than one hundred employees. Uh, that's, that will be a a rule under the Occupational Safety and Health Administration. Uh, they, they are drafting that rule. We do not have any, any information about when that rule will come out. Uh, it's not clear whether or not it will apply to the local governments. We believe that it will apply to local governments in Oregon. Oregon has what's called a state plan. And under the state plan, OSHA rules cover local government employees. So there is a likelihood that that will, when it's, when it's adopted, apply to uh Washington County employees. In addition, there was a second announcement regarding extending the vaccine requirement for federal contractors. Anyone who enters into a contract after October fifteenth or renews a contract after October fifteenth will have required to have all their employees vaccinated. Again, it's, they haven't drafted the rules yet. There's supposed to be a task. Well, they have, they announced the rule. They 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 haven't fleshed it out. There's a task force. Announcing for guidance on September twenty fourth that should give us more information about whether or not the county will be covered because, of course, the county. Receives federal money in several ways. The the question will be how extensive. The previous requirement for federal contractors. Applied only to people working onsite at federal facilities. So and and it's not clear whether or not the new requirement will apply. But it's possibility with staff is monitoring all of this. Jajit Nijira and his team are doing a great job of keeping track of all the things on the federal level. And coordinating with our team here to to provide you with the information that you need going forward. Thanks.
Yet another example of the excellent Washington County team being nimble. Yet another example of the excellent Washington County team being nimble and flexible. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Thanks for that update, Tom. When you say Washington County, you're talking about just us as an entity. You're not talking about the cities of Washington County and the businesses therein? Or is this an umbrella that covers the cities as well?
They would be under the same requirements that we would be as, as an entity. So we're, it would not be something that this county would be imposing upon the cities. They'll have to do their own analysis about whether or not the mandates will apply to them as they're as an entity. If the OSHA rules apply to local governments, I would suspect it would apply to the cities. In addition, many cities are also federal contractors. So they'll, they'll have the same questions. And of course, we work inter-jurisdictionally with lawyers from all over. So we'll, we'll try to get you the best answers we can when we have more information from the federal government.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question as well. Tom, I don't expect you to be a, a constitutional scholar, though you may be. I don't, I find all kinds of interesting new things about you. If this order is found to be unconstitutional, are we covered as a county for implementing any of these provisions? What sort of immunity from prosecution, from suits do we have? I know you can tell me anybody can sue anybody, but what protections do we have?
That's a good question, Commissioner Rogers. I don't think there'd be much protection if, if there was a nineteen eighty-three. I think the premise, there, there's solid case law that vaccine mandates are constitutional. The Supreme Court has addressed the issue. So it would require the Supreme Court to reverse standing precedent. It's old precedent, because of course, the human race's experience with pandemics goes back many years. But the, it would require the Supreme Court. So it's many years out before that could happen unless the court took it on an expedited basis. So I think, you know, under section nineteen eighty-three, you're liable if you violate somebody's constitutional rights. So if a court were to hold that it was unconstitutional, we would have a defense that we were following the federal government's directions. But I think the predicate for that liability would have to be the Supreme Court reversing itself.
I, I thank you. That's exactly the information I wanted. But is there any adoption of these provisions? Should we be making?
Could we table that until the September twenty-first conversation? Or could you two follow up offline on this so we can move on to our full agenda?
That's fine.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Tandaguchi, oh, excuse me, Mr. Carr, did you have anything else? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tandaguchi Dennis, Clean Water Services.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning, Board of Clean Water Services. I just wanted to let you know that Clean Water Services continues to be in stable operations. The team is preparing for the first significant rainfall to the region since last spring. That looks like it's coming on Friday and going into Saturday. So it's really just a good time for everyone to check your rain drains and your gutters. It's sort of hard to believe that already in September, we're going to see some of this rainfall. On the COVID front, we have one new positive case. And I do want to let you know that we do have one team member that is hospitalized with COVID since yesterday, and our thoughts are with them for speedy recovery and also with their family. So I'm sorry to end on that note, but we're, we're doing well, though, at Clean Water Services. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do have a full agenda for today. We're not too far behind, so unless anyone else has any last subjects or remarks, we'll move on then to our first main topic for today, the West Side Multimodal Improvement Study, brought to us by Stephen Roberts, our Director of Land Use and Transportation, Krista Fabbuck, and Mandy Putney of ODOT. Welcome, Mandy.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. I think I'm just going to actually turn to Krista Fabbuck to do a quick introduction of the project and the speakers, and we'll let them take it away. Do we have Chris? Nope.
Oh, okay, a little. All right. So good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm pleased to take this time to introduce Mandy Putney from Oregon Department of Transportation and Matt Ben from Metro, who are here to tell you more about the West Side Multimodal Improvement Study. You'll remember that we, you have, we, this is one of five transit studies that will be going on over the next year, a year and a half within Washington County that we talked about a few weeks ago, I think August tenth. And the idea for a study, or the need for a study on the Highway twenty-sixth corridor has been around for a long time. There've been several studies, of course, that have identified the problems with the backups and the problems with the diversion to adjacent parallel roads and then the use of the roads going over the hills as well. And thus, the need for coming up with a improvements in the corridor was identified in the Regional Transportation Plan in 2018. In 2019, Governor Brown directed Oregon Department of Transportation to conduct a, a study in this corridor. And at that time, both your board and the State of Hillsboro offered to support the study with a hundred thousand dollars each in support. So prior to entering into that intergovernmental agreement, we wanted to give you an opportunity to express your own interests and hopes, what you'd like to see come out of the study, as well as your participation in the course of the work. So Matt and Mandy have a fairly short presentation, and then there'll be an opportunity for questions and comments from you about what the study, what you'd like to see in this study. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mandy.
Thanks, Chris, and thank you for your support so far to get to this point in our kickoff. Hi, my name is Mandy Putney. I'm with ODOT's Urban Mobility Office, and I am pleased to present this morning with Matt Ben from Metro. I'm going to take the first couple of slides, and then he'll move, he'll finish it up for us today. We are, this is our first, like, presentation that we've done about the project. So we're still finalizing the scope with the consultant team and really look forward to working with all of you as we move forward. I will say that even prior to submitting the procurement documents to bring the consultant team on board, we did reach out to county staff and other partners to help inform our scope of work. And we do appreciate that partnership as we move forward. At this point, we plan to have about an eighteen-month study, and we'll be continuing to work closely with our local partners. Next slide, please. For this multimodal study, we do want to really think about the needs and challenges and opportunities in the West Side Corridor and twenty-six to understand exactly what the challenges and opportunities are from a multimodal perspective and in a way that supports future growth. We do know that all of our strategies will look from a multimodal lens and that there has been a lot of work already done in this area. Much of that before has been a little bit siloed in terms of thinking about freight or thinking about transit. And so we would like to have a comprehensive approach to the development of solutions and that those solutions are well-grounded in the, the needs and the problems that are identified. Next slide, please. I, I think that there's pretty clear agreement that there are transportation challenges in this corridor and that we want to dig into them a little bit more to truly understand the congestion and the congestion, why the congestion is happening and when, and then think about projected growth, knowing that this corridor is an important one for the region. As I mentioned, we will build upon past studies and do hope to do that in an intentional and comprehensive way. Next slide, please. This map here centers our study area in terms of problem identification. We really do want to understand the congestion that's currently happening on and near twenty-six, knowing that that congestion on twenty-six has spillover effects for roads and transit that extend outside of this area marked in green. So you will see in the, the problem identification that we talk about problems that extend outside of this area and solutions are, are expected to be on the table that might also be within and extend outside of this area. But for the purposes of the study, we did need to really center in on what we think the root of the problem is so that then we can move forward from that. Next slide, please. I'll now turn it over to Matt to talk a little bit about our partners and process.
Thanks, Mandy. Again, I'm Matt Ben. I'm a transportation planner with Metro. Thanks for having us here today. So our study will be done in collaboration with our regional partners. I'm not going to read off the names there, but you can see the jurisdictions who are our partners, and we'll also be involved with some community business and other experts and representatives. We're going to have a steering committee and a project management group that will be where we will seat our partners and use our partners' help, and we'll have technical workshops and staff-level coordination meetings. So Washington County is going to be involved throughout the entire study. Your staff took part in the RFP Review Committee to select a consultant for the study, and the Washington County Representatives will formally weigh in on the project through that steering committee and the project management group. And we'll describe, I'll describe those groups in a little more detail in a minute. Next slide, please. So the study's going to kick off this month. As Mandy said, we're still finalizing the scope with our consultants, and we're planning to run through December of 2022. The first focus is going to be to set up the steering committee and the project management group and to complete the project charter. And those two groups will meet throughout the study. The steering committee is going to meet at the, at critical milestones to weigh in on, on the work, and the project management group will meet more frequently. We'll be starting up the technical analysis this year, including data collection, assessing existing conditions, evaluating the needs in the corridor, and establishing a problem statement. Then we'll develop scenarios that evaluate and identify the preferred alternatives. Partner engagement will occur through the entire project, those meetings that I talked about, and at least one technical workshop with the staff, where we'll really dig into the, the options, the solutions, multimodal solutions that we see, and turn those into alternatives. And then at the end, we'll develop a final report that will include an implementation plan and will recommend the preferred alternatives and identify the agency leads for those. Next slide, please. So a few more details on the steering committee. It'll be made up of the agency leaders, elected officials, and hopefully representatives from community-based organizations, businesses, where we'll be working on getting representation from them soon. The purpose of the steering committee is to provide guidance and input at key milestones and to represent their constituents' perspectives and priorities. The meetings will be held virtually, and soon we'll work with Washington County staff to identify the Washington County Representatives to the steering committee. Next slide, please. Project Management Group is going to be made up of jurisdiction partner, management, and technical staff. I know in the past, we've had studies where we have a separate PMG and a technical group, but we're going to combine those into one and then have separate technical workshops where, you know, we'll identify staff or the jurisdictions will identify staff to attend those. The purpose of the PMG is to guide the process overall and to review and provide input on study progress and our findings. Washington County will be representative, of course, on the PMG, and like the steering committee, will work with your staff to identify who that is. So we always value your and your staff's contributions to our regional work. And we know in this case, specifically, Washington County has particular expertise with your experience of the Washington County Futures Report. So we're really looking forward to your help and working with you on this project. Next slide, please. So regarding public engagement, we'll engage stakeholders in public throughout the entire study, including targeted engagement with historically marginalized communities and with the business community. We're still refining specifically how we're going to do that in the consultant scope. But we're hoping to include a roundtable with the business community, contracting with CBOs, that's, I'm sorry, community-based organizations to reach those marginalized communities, and we'll have an online survey to solicit input from the public. And that's it. Next slide, please. So here are the main contacts for the four of us who are managing this project from ODOT and Metro, and we'd have to take any questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I don't have any big questions other than to say hello to Mandy. It's always good to see you. And Matt, we've worked together so many years. I hope that it's a thoughtful process. It's a, it's a difficult corridor at best, so. I appreciate the work being done.
Thank you.
Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, as you all know, we completed, I think it was probably 2018. We finished up our Washington County Transportation Study that, that kind of gave us a lot of education and insight to a number of transportation issues, of course, around the county, one of which was the critical need of Cornelius Pass being obviously a major thoroughfare. It's not included in this, and I think I probably understand why that's almost takes on another life of its own. But just to remind you that as we go through this and we find our pitch, pinch points, certainly the tunnel being one of them, an outlet obviously is going to have to be Cornelius Pass. And I think if I remember correctly, our study indicated that if we had a, a better Cornelius Pass going northbound to Highway thirty, it would remove about seventy percent of the truck traffic on twenty-six, which would be a significant easement, I think, for, for car traffic and commuter traffic. So anyway, I just wanted to say that we'll be looking forward to how this study kind of mirrors some of the same information we discovered in, in our study a few years ago. And so this is something we've really needed for a long time. So thank you all for taking on this project, and I look forward to some of the things you find out.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner. I will say that study will be kind of a foundation, one of the foundational documents that we reference and build upon, and also that we know that, that Cornelius Pass will be, will be illuminated as a diversion route connected to the problems that are identified on twenty-six. So it's hard, because every time you put a line on the map of terms of what the, the boundary is for our study, it's hard to figure out how to signify that, that we're going to go outside of that boundary without having the whole, the whole region on the map. But we, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Commissioner Phi.
I didn't realize my, I was unmuted this whole time, but I, this is a really good presentation. Thank you, Mandy and Matt and Kristen and Stephen, and nice to meet you. I was wondering, like, the, the engagement part, will that take? When will you start? Will that be after December 2020 or before? And I'm also interested in knowing, like, all the elements that are involved in the engagement piece. Because one thing I really am a big supporter of is engagement that have incentives mechanism built into so that we respect and appreciate. respect and appreciate people's time.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments very much, Commissioner. I will say that ODOT has done a lot of work over the past year to be able to engage with CBOs in terms of a contractual relationship to provide funding for work that they're doing with us to support our projects and also that we do have ways now to provide incentives at certain points throughout project engagement processes. Once we have the consultant team fully on board, the communication plan and engagement plan will be one of their first items that they work on. So we're happy to share more details as we have them. We're also happy to always take input and suggestions about things that you know work well in Washington County.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner, yeah, I just want one quick question. You referred to Washington County's hundred thousand dollar commitment to this. I know the City of Hillsborough did the same thing. I thought the governor's commitment was a million dollars, but this project is probably a two and a half million dollar project. Am I in the, am I in the neighborhood there? And and where's that funding going to come from?
I can speak to part of your question and then I'll see if Chris or or Stephen want to add anything about your other part. ODOT is contributing a million dollars in funds that have been identified for to support this work. And that is in response to direction that was received from the governor to move forward with a multimodal transportation study. And we are, we know this is the first step of a multi-step process. So yes, this this will not be the end of the work. And we do feel like this is sufficient funding at this point to to get us through the 18-month process that Matt identified.
Okay, well, thank you. And yes, I'd forgotten that the governor actually committed ODOT's money rather than maybe, I don't know, she's got a discretionary fund of her own. But yeah, she's she spent some of your money. So thank you for partnering up with us on this.
Commissioner Treese, did you have any questions or comments you wanted to add? Okay.
I'm just pleased that we've got the report. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just close with just a couple of things. I appreciate that you've come in early to seek our input and questions. So a couple of things from me. You know, having lived in the project area for 31 years and having had to commute to the metro building for 12 years. But through my through my community work in here in Washington County, but also attending JPEC before I was elected official, and then through all of that, I was certainly sensitized to how the Highway 26 experience and traffic flow is affected by the way that the split happens to 405, particularly with 405 and Sixth Avenue. I think it's it's either Fourth or Sixth. I can't remember now. And so it seems like if things are going well with that merge and the whole braiding effect in there of the cars, that traffic flows better. So I just hope that this study won't end up spending or rat-holing on how do we solve that specific problem alone. But I do think it's important to recognize the the domino effect that happens. And frankly, I've totally lost sight as to the the plan for working on recognizing the problems of that connection with 405. So I'm not looking for anything today, just raising a flag on that. I'm studied out with regard to this whole corridor of 405 myself. Then the second thing I want to raise is the Washington County Transportation Future Study was mentioned a couple of times. And I think one of the key, if if my recollection serves me right, one of the key assumptions that that effort used was assume that everything that's currently in the approved Washington County TSP happens. Now what else? Well, you know, part of the reason why things haven't happened very swiftly with that transportation system plan is funding, right? So I, we have to be a little careful how we use the findings from that Transportation Future Study Plan because that stuff, those findings aren't going to happen. It's relying upon a base that of assumption and information that isn't solid. I recognize that it had to start somewhere. So it was a reasonable assumption for the purposes of that study. I don't think it's a reasonable assumption for the purposes of this study is my point. So I think what this study needs to focus on is what are we dealing with over the next 20 years in this corridor? And how are we going to make some improvements in this corridor? Based upon what we know now. And it may come down to the very same challenge that we deal with in every single study right now. We've got ideas. Everything is hinged, waiting for sufficient funds to go and implement solutions. Doesn't matter if we're talking about sidewalks, roads, bridges, culverts, stormwater, everything hinges on making sure that the we're able to be more successful in getting funding applied, whether it's federal, state, or local dollars. So I know I'm not adding any value at this point. So I'll just leave it at that. So thank you very much. And I know we can count on our Washington County staff team to come back to us. I see on the second page of the topic sheet, the last sentence, and consider board member assignments as liaisons to the study steering committee. So I know our staff will work with us as we look at the roster of assignments later this year for the work that goes into 2022 and beyond. So we'll add this to the list.
Thank you.
Okay, Stephen and Chris, is there anything else you need from us on this topic today?
No, I I don't think so. I think your point about what are the base assumptions is a critical one and one that both Matt and Mandy are very familiar with is what you assume, you know, usually start with your financially constrained, you know, what's in the RTP. We all know it's hard to actually get all those projects built in that time. So we also know it's hard to do something even within 20 years. So I think that that'll be some technical challenges for this team.
You know, I I just flipped my page over and I have to apologize. I had a really basic question that I forgot to ask on Slide 4, which is the the map of the N area. I was wondering, how was that proposed study area defined? I mean, logically, in my own mind, I thought about, okay, this is an area that generates a lot of of car volume, some some bus volume, but also truck volume, some. So I was just curious, how did, what kind of process was used to define that specific area?
I can, you want to go, Matt? Go ahead.
Sure. I mean, this is just really an initial map that we drew. And geographically, we're looking at the urban growth boundary. We're looking at, we wanted to include the the red line and blue line and, you know, on the southern end. But the focus is really 26 and the spine and that we wanted to, you know, on the east side, the limit is really the tunnel. Again, this this is the study area we're going to use to identify the problem areas. We really wanted to, we didn't want to spread too wide to to look at where the problems are and then we'll work out from there what the impacts are and what the multimodal solutions may be that address those. And those could expand outside, as Mandy said, could.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. Sorry to bring us back. Alrighty, keep up the good work. Thanks for getting vaccinated and staying healthy.
Great. Thank you.
Take care.
You. Bye.
All right. We're coming into our next topic before a break. This is a briefing on the Center for Addictions Triage Treatment Site Identification. So we get to welcome back Kristin Burke. Oh, it looks like Marnie's going to kick us off. Whoops, you're on mute, Marnie. Sorry.
No, thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. And yes, all I'm going to do is really kick this off to the the true experts. Nick Okun and Kristin Burke are here to give you an update and seek any further direction from the board around our site selection. So I will turn it right over to Nick and Kristin.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, members of the board. We're really excited to be here today. I'm going to do most of the talking, but I have several other experts joining me, including Greg Wyman, our real property manager. I realize that you have all received a briefing and probably read it in depth. And so I'm going to try and actually go through this presentation pretty fast. So we can spend most of the time really just answering any questions you have, having a discussion, and then hopefully receiving some direction from the board about how we should move forward. So again, we're here today to talk about the various site options that we have identified for the Center for Addictions Triage and Treatment. Can we go to the next slide, please? Just for those who may be watching or listening who are not familiar with the project, they'd like to just do a two-second overview. This is really a concept that we've been working on for the last two years to develop critical infrastructure in our community for adding treatment resources that are rapidly accessible for our community members. We lack a lot of resources in our community for addictions treatment, and so we want to create a center that really addresses the needs of our community. And so it would have multiple types of services available with the biggest aspect, most important thing, those services being readily accessible to our community in a rapid sort of way. Next slide, please. We started this work in July of 2019 when I brought the concept to this board and asked for permission for us to move forward and received the go-ahead for that. I want to say that this concept was really developed from scratch. We had a concept, but what we did is we really engaged our community, our subject matter experts, people with lived experience, and brought them together and developed this this project from the ground up and really for Washington County by Washington County members. All of the work that we've been doing over the last two years has been compiled into a feasibility study. That study is, that document is available on our website under the Behavioral Health Division. And so I'd really encourage anybody who wants to learn more about the project to go to that. We did come back on July 20th of this year to present the feasibility to study to this board and received direction from the board to move forward after the study was adopted. Next slide, please. So the the various people who had worked on this project also really helped contribute. What are some of the key aspects that would be part of the preferred site that we identified? Proximity at a public transportation was one of the most key issues. One of the things that we did is we really looked at a radius of about a half mile from any public transportation, whether it's bus or MAX, but really with the goal of it being much more proximal and close and really thinking about things like ease of navigation from the stop to where the center could potentially be located. I will also say that that was probably our biggest, that was our biggest limiting factor when we started looking for sites for the center. It was just very challenging to find opportunities that were located near public transportation. Other aspects that were important for us is considering green spaces. A lot of people will be residents of this program, sometimes for extended periods of time, and we wanted to have access to nature. Nature is very healing, and so that was important for us as we're considering sites. We wanted to have adequate parking. Much of that is related to accessibility, also the ability to engage family members in people's treatment process, and then also the opportunity to hold trainings and other sorts of things that will help bolster our community. We did have some work done early on to look at the site attributes in terms of size. We did some space planning based on the different programs that we want to include and the size of those programs and came up with a number of around 80,000 square feet as being kind of the amount of facility size that would need to be on the property. One of the preferred attributes that was identified early was a campus model where there would be multiple buildings on a an empty lot. And so if you're translating 80,000 square feet, multiple buildings, it came up with a preferred site size of about seven and a half acres. The other thing I just want to mention is that we did consider proximity to schools and daycare as we were looking at the various site options. Next slide, please. So we actually started, oh, I'm gonna.
Commissioner Willie has a question.
Well, it isn't a question. I just want to say that I have to jump off at 10 o'clock to attend a broadband meeting. But I just want to say thank you to the team that has been working on this project. You've done a great job. You've kept me up to speed on it. And so I'm very supportive of where you're going with this. And so thank you for all your hard work. It's going to be a great program. We can add to our, I guess, library of services. So thank you for that. And I'll be jumping off here in a minute.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Appreciate that. Okay, any other questions before I move on? Great. So our process for identifying sites really began back in January of 2021. And the reason why it started so early is because we needed to inform some of the very preliminary cost estimates we had for the project. So we engaged with a broker to really just kind of look and see what was out there, what our options were. We found very few options right at the very beginning. And so the broker, in collaboration with, you know, our real property manager, really kind of did a lot of outreach to other brokers. We created a flyer that we sent out. We also started to look at properties that were on public transportation that kind of met our site attributes and did some reach out to property owners, really trying to drum up options that maybe weren't on the market but could potentially work for the center. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we really struggled with finding a kind of a breadth of options to look at. And so we went back to the table and really thought about how could we expand our options? What are things that we could think about, maybe modifying in terms of our preferred site attributes to expand and hopefully open up more opportunities? So as I mentioned, our preferred option that was identified at the beginning of the project was to purchase an empty lot and do a ground-up construction. Because we weren't finding a lot of opportunities there, we also expanded to think about, could we find a building, an existing building that maybe was large enough to house the entire program? And what are the options in the community that would have a single-building approach with renovation? And then the third option we put on the table was considering more of a split campus model. And I'll talk about that a little bit more later, but really thinking about our campus and not being on a single site, but having two or more sites. but having um two or more sites um that house the different services, but are really closely connected. And so that really um opened up a lot more opportunities when we started considering from that approach. Next slide. So what I want to do is um go through and talk about each of those options and what we found um in each of those options. Um, and I want to um be very realistic here. Um, some of the options that we're putting on the table have some real significant challenges to them. The reason we are go ahead and presenting them today is because um there were certain attributes with those options that really um were appealing, um whether it was proximity to um public transportation or the size or kind of its location in the county. Um, but that doesn't negate the fact that there were challenges or there are challenges with a number of these lots. And so we'll talk about some of those, and Greg can go into a little more detail. But I want to start with um the idea of um a single empty lot and building from scratch. Um, our option number one was the only piece of property that we found that is currently on the market um that was of the right size, um that was on public transportation um and um currently available. Um, it's located in Cornelius. Um, the, we've done a review of the zoning. Um, it's likely compatible with the services um that we are um wanting to offer at this center. Um, the, 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 the challenges of this is that um it is located in Cornelius. So it's a ways away from our population centers. While it is on a um, um, public um transportation, being on a bus line, um, it's pretty significant. And if you think about um wanting to have a sobering center where um we can hopefully divert people from jail, have law enforcement bring people to the center as an opportunity to, again, divert from the criminal justice system, it would be challenging to have um the center located out there. Um, the other challenge with this lot is that um you can see, this is actually a picture of it on the slide. Um, it abuts residences, um, and that would certainly be concerning for um the, the individuals living in those communities. Um, and we would have to work very, very closely with them to address their um concerns and make sure that we would be good neighbors. Obviously, we'll have to do that with any of the site options, but with the residences that close, that's a consideration. Our option number two is an interesting option. Um, it's one that um was identified um as a potential in that um Tektronix Campus is looking at um kind of divesting um a lot of the buildings that they currently have or that they've used in the past. And so there's a couple of options that have come up on there, as well as um the um consideration of, would we be able to parcel off a portion of that campus that is undeveloped or is, is um not a building itself and use that for um the, the center? Um, what we have heard is that the owners are open to ideas, um, but not that there, there isn't a specific parcel of land that has been identified and um it would have to be partitioned off from the rest of the campus. Um, we've since learned that there's additional challenges, and I'm going to let Greg um talk about that because I, it's not in the briefing document, and so I want to make sure that the board has an opportunity to hear about it. Greg?
Thank you, Kristin. Uh, good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Thank you uh for having us this morning. The Tektronix land, the challenges with that is the, uh, the owners would have a least preference there. They would open themselves up to a purchase offer agreement, but that purchase offer agreement would require a parcelization from the rest of the project. It also, under some governing CCNRs that are there with the rest of the users, would require that all users were in agreement to the use that we are proposing out there. So this is a rather uphill uh battle and may not come to fruition. It, it would be a lot of time invested in garnering the support of all the users out there, as well as getting the landlord to parcel that off and be able to come to a reasonable price for them to sell that property.
Um, the other challenge that um is really important to note is that um the zoning is not compatible um with how we would want to use the property. So zoning change would be required, which um certainly isn't a guarantee. Next slide, please. So then I want to go to the next option that we talked about, which is a single building. Um, and um having all of the CAT um programs in that single building, renovating it to, to meet our needs. We only found one building um that was of um adequate size to house all of the um services um that was located to pub, proximal to public transportation. Um, again, part of the reason why um this, the, the building we found is another building on the Tektronix Campus. It's building fifty-five. Um, it's about eighty thousand square feet, so it's very in line with um the size need of the CAT. Um, all of the challenges that Greg just talked about would apply here. The zoning also um is not um compatible, so there would be a zoning change. The reason why we wanted to put the Tektronic buildings um and um the site options on the table is um the, it is located right on the MAX Blue Line. And so um it's really central. Um, in fact, it's probably the most central option of all the ones we found for the whole county. Um, so we wanted to have um it considered, um recognizing that there are um a lot of challenges to it. Uh, next slide, please. Now I want to talk about the split campus idea. Now, when we think about splitting the campus, there's really two kind of um types of services that we need to think about. One is the intensive services, and those are the residentially-based services. So we're talking like residential treatment, um sobering, um withdrawal management services, um crisis stabilization, those sorts of um services where somebody is onsite um for an extended period of time. Um, because of the need for commercial kitchen facilities, laundry facilities um related to those services, um, it really makes a lot of sense to group those services together. Often people will also move from one service to another um as part of their recovery journey. And so we wanted to um group the intensive services together, and then um we consider the other services, community services. So community services are the services that are more outpatient in nature. Um, they're also the co-located services. So when we think about that, we think about mental health treatment, um substance use outpatient treatment, um, our crisis services, um our Hawthorne Walk-in Center, um co-located medical, dental, pharmacy, you know, really kind of all of those other services that will help a person after they um move out of um the more residentially-based services. So those are the two groupings um that um we split the um services, the CAT services into when thinking about a split campus model. The one thing that um this really helps with is some of the zoning challenges. Um, the community services um are much easier to cite. Um, they're um because of the nature of the services, um, they're compatible with more zoning um uses. Um, whereas the uh residential services, we found that, that the zoning for that is one of the biggest limiting factors. The other thing that um it allows us to do is potentially have um the sites um located um more proximal to um to population centers by looking at smaller sites. So, and then again, it just opened up a few additional options for us. Um, next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about the intensive services building options first. Um, the first one that I'll mention is going back to the Cornelius Lot and looking at doing a smaller lot there um and building again from the ground up. Um, the reason why we wanted to put the Cornelius Lot option back on the table for um the intensive services building is because the zoning is compatible. Again, there's so few options where we found compatible zoning that that was one. Um, our thought was that you could put the intensive services there and then have the community-based services located a little closer to population centers so that there's a little more access. Again, the, the challenges that I talked about earlier um still exist, um being near residences, um being quite a distance from the other, um, the main population centers. Um, so, um, but we wanted to put that on the table. Um, option number five is a building the county is very familiar with. It's our um WACCA Building. Um, it's a building that is owned by the county. Um, the, the interesting thing is we discovered that um the zoning is compatible there um with conditional use approval. Um, it is um attractive in that it is um in Beaverton. It's um located right off of twenty-six, so it makes the accessibility for um law enforcement, um for um residents um throughout the county. Um, it makes it a little more accessible. Um, so um that, that was definitely an attractive option for us that we wanted to um present. Uh, next slide, please. Now, um, thinking of the split campus model, thinking about the community services side of the building um or of the, the campus. Um, we found an option, option number six, um of a building that is off of Cornell and Alec Leck um in the city of Hillsborough. Um, the zoning for that building is compatible um with um conditional use approval for community services. It is not compatible for the intensive residential services, but it could be for the community services. It's a nice-sized building. It's actually um very much in line with um what we had as our target for community services at fifty-one thousand square feet. It is currently on the market. It's for sale um and available. Um, the other thing that's attractive about the building is it has nice separation of space with a lot of green space behind it and around it. Um, so there aren't residences nearby um that would be um concerned about the center, at least not immediately close to it. Um, the other thing is, is that the layout of the building is really conducive to community services. Um, it's two stories and has separate um kind of um sections of the building that could be parceled out for the various community services. So we think that the um renovation costs would actually be lower on this than a lot of the other options we have available. Um, finally, our option number seven is the building that is not on the market. Um, but the um owner has approached um our broker and said that they are willing to entertain offers, um but don't want to put it on the market unless they know that there's um uh real interest in the building. Um, it's near our existing um Hawthorne Walk-in Center, our crisis services um in Washington County. It is proximal to public transportation, the MAX line. Um, the zoning is compatible for um uh, community services. Um, the, the challenge with that particular building is that um we don't know how much um the cost really is. We have kind of a preliminary idea, but based on tax records, but we're not able to really know what the owner is um interested in or it hasn't been assessed. So it's hard to know what the asking price would be, and we think that the renovations on the building would be pretty substantial um and higher cost. Um, next slide, please. So we brought all this information back to our leadership team um for the project and um asked them to consider and um make a recommendation. This is just our recommendation as a team. Um, clearly, it's the board's decision, and we're really looking for input about um how to move forward. Um, but the recommendation of the team was um to look at the split campus approach um with the WACCA Building and the Alec Leck Building. Um, intensive services at the WACCA Building and then the community services at the Alec Leck Building. Um, there was a lot of reasons why the team um kind of fell to this as the preferred option. Um, for one, it's the least expensive option, um and significantly in some cases in terms of um the other options. Um, with the um resources that we have currently, as well as um the potential for the opioid settlement dollars, we believe that we would have enough resources to accomplish um opening both services. Um, between the two buildings, they're located close to population centers. Um, both of them would be relatively fast. In fact, we believe they'd be the fastest options for opening the center. Um, with the county owning the WACCA Building, we could commence um really quickly on starting with some of the architectural design. Um, you know, so that would certainly give us a heads, or a head start. And then we also feel like it's most compatible with the neighborhood locations in terms of um, you know, being one is a more commercial district. Um, another is more of a flex use with lots of um green space around it. Next slide, please. And then this is just a um illustration of where the two buildings that we're recommending are located. They're actually pretty proximal to each other. They're two miles apart um on Cornell Road. Um, you can see we added the bus stops, so you can see where the bus stops are located. They're both served by the Cornell Bus. I think it's forty-eight. Um, and so um, you know, the, having the buildings be that close together also allows for good coordination of the services across the two sites. Uh, next slide, please. And I believe that is it for our presentation. So now I would love to hear any questions and um discussion.
Before we kick off uh with the full board, could I just clarify? You've made a recommendation. Uh, Ms. Angie, is there a question that you're seeking our direction on today or? Or what?
The, the question before the board is, is the board supportive of staff recommendation and moving this forward to um uh further analysis of these two sites?
Thank you. All right, uh, Commissioners, any questions or comments, uh, including uh your input on the aforementioned question? Going once. Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, this is something that I'm very interested in. I uh appreciate the matrix that you've applied to the uh, the different locations and at the uh, the factors that you've put into place. I would support continued investigation into uh your recommended sites.
Commissioner Fire, Commissioner Rogers, are you comfortable with this recommendation and moving forward or any questions or concerns?
Um, I'm comfortable. Thanks, Chair Harrington. I'm comfortable with the proceeding with the staff recommendation. Thank you, Kristin and Nick and everyone, Greg and Marnie. This is really a great presentation, and I really appreciate the well-thought-out. I, I always like when I have more options to choose from, and it sounds like you guys did really great research on all the options that are available, and I'm comfortable with uh the conclusion that you came together uh to put forward those two recommendations, and I look forward to learning more about more about those two recommendations and the sites and if there's any um, you know, unintended consequences that we should be considering if we were to implement and go forward with these two recommendations. So, uh, good job, and I look forward to further discussions.
My, my two, yeah, my two or three, yeah, go ahead. Okay, my, my uh two or three comments would be one, I like a split campus approach. I, I think that uh trying to concentrate everything in one area is, is a mistake. It's as county is growing. Uh, you're, you're going to need facilities throughout the county, not just in one location. So um that would be my preference too. I, I feel a little awkward in having this discussed uh in terms of dollars and sites when there's property acquisitions. Uh, anyone who's dealt with any amount of real estate knows if you tell me you're interested in what your approximate cost is and you kind of predetermined that, uh, so I feel a little awkward in that as far as your understanding of the issues. I, I have no, no exception at all. I think it makes sense. I'm not sure if you don't get the money, where the, where this money is going to come from. You think it's the opioid settlement, but um, it's a lot of money. And uh, I don't know if you're going to have to pose alternate or have a contingency plan. So I, it's, yeah, normally acquisitions of property, listen, private side, you, you have uh, you play your cards pretty close to your chest in terms of dollars and sites and, and what you have available. So that, that's just some general comments. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I actually relate to Commissioner Rogers' question uh, or not question, but uh observation uh in, in this feeling a little awkward uh with regard to property acquisition um from that standpoint. That being said, I also uh I also really applaud the comments that you've heard today on job well done in pursuing different options, very well thought out. You've been very diligent in working with the broader community on the problem we're trying to solve, our options to do just that and to move forward. So yes, I want to go full steam ahead. But I want to share an observation, but in as gentle a way as I possibly can. You've done a terrific job of being very, you know, common sense, business oriented in all of this. But I feel like every now and again, we forget the fundamental why. Well, we don't forget. Rather, we don't lead with the fundamental why of why are we doing this? You know, why this concept? And it really goes, the picture that you offered on that very second slide with the concept speaks volumes. You know, the rock with hope. We're doing this because we, being the community of the size that we are, we have community members who need these services for sobering, withdrawal management, residential treatment, stabilization, assessment and triage here, right in our communities. So that it is so much more accessible in order for them to thrive. And that's really the heart of the matter. And because of the size of community that we are, i.e. the population and the very human needs, I don't want to say the volume of need. There's a better way to put it. It's important that we act now and we have the opportunity to act now. And I'm really struggling in a sense that I think from this day forward, we need to somehow figure out how to bring the heart right up front about why this is so important and so timely that we act now. And I find it kind of funny that I'm the one that's voicing this because, you know, it tend to be about the numbers and about the business and about the approach. But it really speaks to why we are a county government. We are in service to people and the people of our community need this resource now more than ever. And because of the great work that you all team members, as you all move around on my screen, because of the work that you've done, we are able to move forward with these very real and realistic options now. So I am thumbs up. Let's go. You've heard it here from all five members of the board. The four of us convened right now and then Commissioner Willie, who was here, but had to step out for another meeting. So let's go full steam ahead and help ensure that we have the story and the supportive materials available to our broader community members so that they can identify with the fact that these are their family members, their friends, their coworkers and their neighbors who need and deserve these services right here in our community. So that's it for me. Commissioner Treese, you had your hand raised.
I just wanted to point out that exactly what you said at the very last, and that is that it's not just the person in need of services, it's the entire community. So thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Angie.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did want to note that staff are still committed as we move forward, working with CARES Northwest and FJC. As the board may recall, the two organizations were, had an interest potentially in this property. So we are sharing property information with them and are committed to assisting in reasonable ways that we can in their site selection efforts. Because their missions are also very important to service delivery at the county.
Alrighty, is there anything more? You, Ms. Angie, Ms. Burke and Mr. Kuhn and Ms. Kyle that you need?
No. Thank you, Chair Harrington and board. And Commissioner Rogers, I can get you more information about the capital that we have and what we anticipated. I just met with Brad yesterday and we feel very confident that the opioid dollars will come through to cover these costs. They may not be as much as we were hoping for, but they will cover these costs.
I know we have a myriad of other questions as well. One of the questions that I had from my briefing is about the operational costs. So, but I know the team is going to be following up on that and coming back to not only the questions I have, but the others that board members have as well.
Yep. Yeah, our next step is to do a much more in-depth financial analysis now that we know which properties to really focus on. And so we'll be bringing that back to the board.
Okay, great. Thank you very much then.
Thank you, Chair Harrington.
Okay, so at this juncture, it's 10:25. We're going to take a 15-minute break. Were there any board comments before we did that? Nope. Okay, we'll see everyone back here at, how about 10:40? Okey dokey, see you a little later.
Sorry, I was sitting here quietly working off camera and everybody else was so quiet. I just kept going, lost track of time. Alrighty, well, welcome back everyone. We'll pick back up in our work session with our next topic, which is related to the Washington County Cooperative Library Services and our intergovernmental agreements, both with the cities and the nonprofits who provide those direct library services. But we have a role and here to take us through it is our great Director of the Washington County Cooperative Library Services Division, Lisa Tattersall. Welcome, Lisa.
Morning. Thank you. Good morning Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I am Lisa Tattersall with Washington County Cooperative Library Services, or WCCLS. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you today about our intergovernmental agreements. The cooperative is a partnership between the county, nine cities, and three nonprofits, and we provide countywide public library services. We're governed by a set of five intergovernmental agreements, or IGAs, that we review every five years with each levy cycle. One key aspect of the IGAs is setting the funding allocation for each library for the period of July 2022 through June 2026. I'm here today to review the topics covered so far in our meetings with our partners and to seek input from the board on three policy questions. The direction we get from the board today will influence how we structure our conversations with our city and nonprofit partners this fall, particularly around library funding. There is a detailed staff report that was attached with this work session item, and so I'm going to go through the content in that report now and share highlights. Next slide, please. I'm going to share an overview of our governance quickly and then really focus on the issues that we reviewed with the executive board, share the financial context, pose policy questions, and then review our next steps. And I do want to say, I probably should have had more detailed PowerPoint slides as I was reading through my report again in preparation, so please just let me know if you have questions as we go along. Next slide, please. So the Board of Commissioners is the governing board for our cooperative, and then we have a group called the Executive Board, which is advisory to staff and the Board of Commissioners. Each city on this, each city on the Executive Board is represented by their city manager, and then each nonprofit is represented by the president or the chair of their nonprofit association board. The Executive Board advises on the distribution of financial resources for countywide library services and then long-term governance and funding strategies. We also have a group called the Policy Group, which is made up of the library directors from each library and their advisory to the WCCLS manager and then to the Executive Board. Next slide, please. So, so far we've had five meetings with the Executive Board and Policy Group all together. There's a summary in the staff report about each topic we reviewed with them. Because we have limited time today, I was going to just talk about the topics that tie directly to the policy questions we've brought for you today. And those are really around our ending fund balance target and library funding allocation. So, starting with the ending fund balance strategy. We talked about what a potential strategy would be for the next four years of this levy cycle. And the ending fund balance target is really important because it determines how much we have to spend on library services for this period of time. We looked at the Government Financial Officers Association, and they recommend no less than two months' worth of revenue in the ending fund balance. WCCLS currently has about 13.5 million in our fund balance, which represents about four months of operations right now. Our current IGAs with the cities and nonprofits indicate that we need to provide 60 days' notice to libraries should we need to reduce funding for them. So this means really that we need a minimum two months of operational expenditures in our ending fund balance to satisfy this obligation. Previous conversations that we've had with the Board of Commissioners and the Executive Board in preparation for the current levy cycle included the idea of strategically spending into our fund balance in order to maintain service levels because we have flat funding essentially, because we renewed the rate with the last levy in May 2020. Based on projections at the time, maintaining, like if we kept up with the four-month fund balance that we have currently, we would not be able to keep up with library funding allocations and we wouldn't be able to keep up with digital content costs over the life of the levy cycle. So we had a really good conversation with the Executive Board about, you know, a strategy and how we want to balance between sort of that minimum of two months' commitment, but the challenge of retaining four months in our fund balance and not being able to really provide service at the level we are currently. And so the, the really, the strategy that the group agreed on was that targeting three months of expenditures and our ending fund balance is a good balance between fiscal prudence and also our responsibility to provide library service to the best of our ability. Okay, next slide, please. Now, oh, actually, sorry, back to the other slide. Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to do a deep dive on, semi-deep dive on our funding allocation history. So, here we go. So, the current levy cycle that we're in right now included a five-cent increase in the rate. We went from 17 cents to 22 cents per thousand. And what that allowed us to do back in fiscal year 1617, when we had this new revenue coming in, was to increase everybody's allocation. And so this little chart shows, on this base of fiscal year 1516 funding, we applied a 4% increase across the board, and then on top of that, each library got another increase anywhere from 3% to 11%. And that increase was based on a combination of metrics that they used at the time, which includes circulation, so checkouts, how many items were checked out from the libraries, the number of visits to the library, and then the number of residents in each library service area. So this was like a one-time addition for the, the start of the new levy cycle. On top of that, every year since then, the libraries have been getting a 3% increase annually. In addition to this sort of base rate increase that every library saw, some libraries also saw expanded operational funding to support expanded services in larger facilities. So we never provide funding for capital, but we provide funding for operations in expanded capital project facilities. So four libraries saw an expansion in their funding to support larger facilities. Banks saw a new meeting room. Bethany and Garden Home both added an annex space for library events, so we added additional funding for them. And then Cornelius saw additional funding to support their new beautiful library building. We also provided funding for the Aloha Community Library, which joined our cooperative in 2016. We were able to do that because of the increase in the rate. Countywide, the levy rate increase also allowed us to dramatically expand our digital content, provide access to online tutoring support. We developed partnerships with school districts to set up district-wide library card rollouts. And then we installed an automated materials handling system in our warehouse, which allowed for more efficiency for libraries. And this is a, a key point here, that the underlying base amount for each library, so upon which all of these funding increases were applied, was not evaluated at the time. So no library saw a change to their historical base funding through the process that the cooperative went through five years ago. This was a deliberate decision they made at the time. Because libraries' largest cost are personnel, if a library saw a significant reduction in their funding allocation, they would likely have to reduce FTE, which also likely reduces the service levels and operating hours for the public. And since this would have not been in line with our commitment to voters, that like service levels would be maintained and increased when they approved a five-cent levy, and so that was the reason that they really didn't look at the historical base level and make any adjustments there. In this process that we've been going through this year, some cities have expressed an interest in reevaluating this base rate of funding provided to libraries in the next four years, particularly through an equity lens. And I think it's true that racial equity, community demographics, different measures of the way libraries are used, and unique needs in different communities and cultures weren't explicitly addressed in previous funding discussions. So one example of that is some communities may really need and prioritize access to computers, Wi-Fi, computers in the library, because they don't have the technology, their connectivity at home. Other communities may have that already at home, and so they go to the library for additional enrichment, books, videos, all that kind of stuff. So libraries, communities do value different things, and what we count in terms of metrics matters and has an impact. So evaluating our investment in library services through an equity lens is absolutely something we should do as a cooperative. The question is really not if, in my mind, it's when. Given the financial constraints and the factors we have that are adding a lot of complexity, and so it needs to be a thoughtful process. The 2020 levy was a renewal of the 2015 rate, so that doesn't leave WCCLS with significant additional revenue to allocate to libraries in this process. Should the cooperative undertake a full evaluation of allocations now with no significant revenue available or additional revenue available, we would need to reduce allocations for some libraries in order to increase the allocations for others. The challenge with that is we would, if we reduced allocations for some libraries, we would see a loss in service and open hours potentially. Since staffing, like I said before, is the library's largest expenditure. The commitment we made to voters in May 2020, when they renewed the levy, was that the renewal of the levy helps libraries by maintaining open hours at all libraries, avoiding cuts in service. So cutting service at some libraries would run counter to the commitments we've made to voters and would impact the communities in those areas, including residents who use libraries to access the internet, students doing homework, houseless members of our community really rely heavily on public library spaces. There are a few other areas of complexity in how our funding is allocated and that are also important to investigate, I think, in a robust process in the future. And that is the disparity that we see between city or county-run libraries, the county does run the Westlake Community Library, and the nonprofit libraries. So libraries operated by cities do see operational revenue from their city. And on average, it's anywhere from 25% to 50% of a city library's revenue comes from their city. This county and nonprofit libraries really rely on WCCLS as their primary source of revenue, and so on average, they're able to fundraise anywhere from 3% to 15% of their income, but the rest of it is, is reliant on WCCLS. So if we were to reduce an allocation for a library that is reliant on WCCLS, there would be a much greater impact to the community in that area as opposed to reducing a library that had municipal funding. But of course, that would impact the municipality's budget, and it would cause conversations on that side as well on how they wanted to address that. Another really interesting and challenging aspect of our cooperative is that because each library is operated independently, they hire independently, they pay, you know, all their salary scales are different. And so there are significant disparities in staff salaries between nonprofit libraries in particular, and then the city and county libraries of a similar size and geographic location. So, an example, the, we report, all public libraries report to the state library every year, all of these things like salary scales and all of that good stuff. So if you look at that, that data, starting hourly wages for a library assistant, classification ranges from $13 to $24 an hour, depending on the library, which is a really significant disparity. And that disparity exists for every position, so from the library director down to the library clerk, we see that really broad range. And so what this means is that the small nonprofit libraries, in particular in our cooperative, aren't really able to pay competitive wages for libraries of their urban location and activity levels. So this imbalance in wages between unincorporated libraries or libraries in unincorporated areas and incorporated areas can also reflect differences in investment in library services in our region. The level of investment a local jurisdiction can afford to make in their staff impacts the level of service a library is able to provide. Another key thing as we think about equity is that how much a library is able to invest in their staff impacts how well they're able to hire staff that reflect the diversity of the community. Candidates for culturally specific job postings are in very high demand across our region and nationally. And so if a library isn't able to pay competitive wages, it's unlikely that they're going to be able to recruit and retain workers that represent the community, which limits their ability to provide culturally relevant programming, collections, and services. So salaries a library can afford to pay are an equity issue of a sort. So library funding in the cooperative is very complex. There's a lot of underlying structural and equity issues that we would love to address in a future process, ideally as part of another strategic planning process, which would include, I think, a countywide service evaluation and a community needs assessment. But in order to keep our commitment to voters right now and to maintain stable service levels through June 2026, we are recommending that we do not reduce the allocation for some in order to increase it for others. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of financial context. We are anticipating stable revenue growth through June 2026, but as usual, costs are projected to increase at a greater rate than revenue. So we're anticipating approximately 4% AV rate, assessed value rate for the duration of this levy, and then our general fund transfer is capped at 4%. So we're seeing about a 4% increase in our revenue. That's what we're projecting. And then the greatest expenditure that we have is the distribution to libraries. They've been getting a 3% annual increase on those allocations. And then our costs at WCCLS for personnel and collections are increasing at a rate greater than 4%. All of that said, next slide, please. We have, we're bringing policy questions to your board because we're at a critical point in the process where the direction that we receive from you will help determine next steps in the process with the cities and the nonprofits this fall, especially around funding allocation. with the cities and the nonprofits this fall, especially around funding allocations. Next slide, please. And so the three questions we have are, does the board support the ending fund balance strategy and target? Does the board wish to maintain library funding allocations? These are very immediate questions. And how does the board wish to balance the need for investments at the county level with targeted investments in equity outcomes? So I'll go through each of these briefly. So the, the recommendation for the fund balance is a three-month target where we balance sort of our fiscal prudence and providing service. In terms of funding allocations, we do recommend that we keep them, maintain them as they are right now, and then apply an increase on top of those. But that we don't look at reducing the allocations for some to increase the allocations for others because that would adversely impact library service across the county.
Hang on, Lisa.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioners, all of these policy questions are enumerated in the handout that Lisa provided in the packet, which I think is on page 48 of 122 or page six of her handout. So it might make it faster if we all have that at the ready. So, so thank you, Lisa, for just articulating question number one and the recommendation. You want to go through the remaining two real briefly?
Yes. And so we are recommending that we maintain funding allocations as they are through the next four years in order to maintain consistent service for patrons across the county in keeping with our levy commitment. And then the last one, we have to look at balancing, we have, do we want to balance the need for investments at the county level with also setting aside some funds to target investments in equity outcomes? So there are things we could do. For example, if we wanted to give the libraries an increase greater than 3% a year, which would help them keep up with their increasing costs. Or we could invest in digital collections at a rate greater than 5% a year. There's kind of endless ways to spend this money in terms of providing a countywide benefit to our libraries. However, we're also mindful that we do want to target equity outcomes. And so we are recommending that we cap our expenditures in terms of library increases and digital collection spending in order to create a dedicated pool of funding that we could use to target equity outcomes. And that would create a balance between maintaining these countywide services and then also paying special attention to the needs that we have in our community around equity. And so if we cap library allocations and digital collection spending, we're able to create a small pool of funds to address equity goals, which we're estimating would be approximately half a million dollars a year through fiscal year 26. One use of this funding pool could be to support libraries. We're going to be, as we go through the limited English assistance policy work with the Equity Office, in past IGAs, we have not flowed down the Civil Rights Act compliance requirements to our libraries. But that is something we would seek to do in this cycle of IGAs. And of course, that comes with a cost in terms of interpretation and translation services. So we want to, you know, financially support libraries to be able to meet those requirements. So that would be one way to use those funds. But I'm also talking with our Equity Office to look at other ways. And then, of course, that would be a conversation with our libraries as well, what they would want to do.
Well, I'll say, starting with LEAP is a vital part. And then there's ample opportunity to, to go beyond that. And those ideas are really good for looking at having that robust strategic conversation for looking at future levy definitions. So commissioners, we've got three questions that were being asked to weigh in on. Who would like to go first? Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
I'd like to go last.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to, I would like to hear what, what my other commissioners, what my peers say. I, I, I'm, you know, I've read the materials.
How about this? We'll do it in total reverse order. I'll start. So to the first question and the first recommendation, I agree with the recommendation that we maintain at least three months of expenditures in the fund balance. I think that was a very practical solution to the situation. On question two, maintaining library funding allocations through fiscal year 2526, which is the ending fiscal year of this current levy, the recommendation is to maintain those funding library allocations. And I'm totally thumbs up on that. Any changes to that should be done through a robust process and aimed towards the next generation of that levy. On the third question, with regard to equity outcomes, I appreciate the staff recommendation of carefully managing the expenditures by capping the rate of annual increases in those two large areas of the 3%, as well as the digital collections in order to create a dedicated pool of fund to target equity outcomes. In addition, I think it's vital that we make sure that across the whole cooperative, that all of the libraries are meeting the needs of the Civil Rights Act, specifically the Limited English Assistance Policy, and that we have that as a base and that any and all other good possibilities, some in place in certain libraries today and others into the future, be considerations going beyond, beyond the next generation of this library. And I'll also add some other closing comments, some specific ones. We, Washington County, through the Cooperative Library System, we don't control personnel hiring. We do certainly for our own staff, but not for all of the different libraries, whether or not they're from cities or nonprofits. The libraries do that. So similarly, we don't play a role with regard to their pay equity. But certainly, pay equity is something that they can and should look at. And I, and that pertains across the system as well. But, you know, there are different libraries that have different, there's the size of the population of that community. There's also the size of their collection, right? Their materials that they own and contribute towards use of the cooperative. But there's also their own staff level that they control and want to offer in their library, as well as how that own city has a range of diversity in its residents and in its workforce. So those are great topics for conversation amongst the different libraries. But I don't think, I think it is a good idea to have a functional base. But we are, this cooperative is not a one-size-fits-all by any stretch of the imagination. And so I am very supportive of having a robust process looking at these various needs for having a successful library system here in the 2020s and beyond as, as the cooperative looks at a future library replacement. So, so yes, on all three with some additional comments. And happy to go first for a change. So commissioners, Commissioner Rogers, Phi, and Treese, what are your thoughts?
I'll go next. I did everything to Harrington, said, Lisa, great job on this presentation. I really, even though you had minimal slides, you did it very well through talking through and really explaining in a slow motion where I can track. So I appreciate that. And I support all the recommendations that you're suggesting. And so I agree with Chair Harrington, yes, on all three, and look forward to what comes out of the collaborative conversation with the, with our Equity Office and what you put forward. So good job and look forward to more.
Thank you for the presentation. And Chair, thank you for going first. My concern is the nonprofits. I'm just going to register that I'm thinking about that with Cedar Mill, with Bethany. And, you know, I was, Garden Home is really in Roy's district, but it's really, really close to mine as well. So I'm, I'm concerned about that nonprofit viewpoint. I'd like to talk to you further about that and just be aware of what, what support I can, I can provide there. The West Slope Library, I think, you know, I'm comfortable with, with, with what's going on there. But in general, I certainly support all three of these questions. So thank you. And like I said, thanks for going first, other commissioners.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm next. I'd be surprised to all of you. I might be, pardon me, I need a little drink. I'm in a little different position than maybe the rest of you. But I, I appreciate that we're looking at strategy. That's always important. On a number of occasions, I've said on this board that various departments and even the county is not in a sustainable position. And this is just another example. When we formed this cooperative way back when, it was with the idea that it was indeed a cooperative and that we were not the guiding force, if you will, we would administer it. But the, each of the entities, cities, you know, at that point would spend whatever money they needed to spend to run their own libraries. And we would simply be doing collections and distribution and allow people to use each library throughout the county. What's happened is that, and this is my opinion, nobody else has said it, rich have got richer and the poor have got poorer. We haven't really followed our strategic plan and would provide the same level of service to everyone. So that for the nonprofits, if we could identify an area in which they service, there ought to be a per capita contribution for that entity. If it's in a city, of course, they have a defined population we could, we could distribute on. What's going to happen is it's based upon circulation. And it's just like all of us, if you are looking for a product and you go to a mall, and there's lots of stores, you like to go there. So you have some shopping. With libraries, if your local library, if it's a nonprofit or wherever it is, doesn't have the collection, you're going to go to an adjoining city that does have a collection. So as long as we base it upon collection, not per capita, but on collection, the larger, the library, the more money they're going to get. And it's always going to be difficult to balance with the nonprofits or the smaller entities. So to your first question, that does my commentary. If your question, first question on fund balance, of course, we always need to have some target. I'm a little interested and surprised that we're trying to true up everybody because they're running out of money, not surprising. And hopefully, it's a one-time adjustment, but I understand. Does the board wish to maintain library funding allocations? I'll go with the majority, but I, I, I think that's a disappointing answer at best. I, I think, much like schools did when they did a property tax overhaul and they came up with a per capita, you know, it's an allocation based upon students. We ought to look at something different for our folks. Or we have a divergence, and we say it's a divergence, from our current strategic plan of, you know, everybody gets the same allocation. So I, problematic, but I'll go with it. I don't like it. How does the board wish to balance the need for investments at county level with target investments in equity outcome? Well, equity has lots of definitions in my mind, and everybody else is different. But again, if you get back to the premise, the person to person, and regardless of you're a bazillionaire or you're poor, you should have access. And how do you get access? You have funding based upon dollars that are attributable to their community library. So I, I, I don't know, I'm saying more than all of you want to hear. But I, I just don't see that this is going to come to a good end in a few years because people in the cities always think that they're not getting their fair shake in terms of levy and that, you know, that they need it based upon circulation. I'll give you just a quick anecdote, which is interesting. I had the city folks in my own city here at Tiger to say, Roy, you're unincorporated, which I am. You don't pay your fair share of the library we have to maintain. And I said, well, I own two commercial buildings. Come down and look at what my assessed value is. And you're going to find out, I pay one heck of a lot of taxes to your local library. And so I should be able to use those as well. So there's a real misunderstanding, I think, on how this was all formed, how it was meant to be. I don't blame our staff. You've inherited it. And the board is going to, by kicking it down the street to 2526 or beyond, you're going to have to deal with it at that point, some difficult decision of why are the nonprofits, which we lowly accepted. Pam mentioned one that's in my district, so close to hers, it's spit across the border almost. Aloha is another one. What we willingly accepted those in, but we didn't willingly accept the funding that was going to be necessary to maintain them in the, in the cooperative library. Levis, if you want to call it that, or just the allocation. So that's my thoughts. I'm sorry to burn on about it, but it, it, it's just another example of how, how do you come to equity for people throughout the county who are paying just as much taxes as whether you're in a city or not in a city or rural, to their local library? How do we get to that point? And instead of us being the punching bag in the middle, trying to say, well, because you've got more circulation, because you're bigger, you get more. Where if the other libraries had more circulation, they would have more local support as well. So anyway, I'll go with the majority.
All right. So I think what, what you've heard is we have all four of us saying yes to your first question and at least three of us being yes on the recommendation. And unfortunately, we don't have the benefit of Commissioner Willie's comments at this point. I would like to say, I think Commissioner Rogers' points are well taken and are ones that should carry over into the conversation that should probably kick off soon around that next levy renewal or not. And really begs the question of amongst the cooperative, do they want to continue with the cooperative? And if so, why? And if not, why not? And then what sort of recommendations moving forward? So I think that pretty much sums it up.
I appreciate it. And I just want to echo that I agree that this is a process we need to start soon. And so I'm thinking, as soon as we get this set of IGAs wrapped up, we launch into those really excellent questions that Commissioner Rogers and the rest of y'all raised today that we have a lot to talk about. And it's not something we want to wait till a year before the next levy to start talking about. So, thank you.
And, oh, I also wanted to note that I appreciated seeing the article in, I think it's Pamp, yes, Pamplin Media about the American Rescue Plan Act funding that libraries receive. So thank you to you and the cooperative library members for seeking those grant funds that were made available through the State Library Association or Board.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to our next topic of appointing members to the Aging and Veteran Services Advisory Council. Do we have Rebecca Miller with us? I know we're a few minutes ahead of schedule. Rebecca.
I'm here. Good morning.
Oh, there she is. Hi.
Hello. So shall I just start, Chair Harrington? Hello. So shall I just start, Chair Harrington? Great. So, good morning. I'm Rebecca Miller, Supervisor for Disability, Aging, and Veterans Services. At the September 28th Board Meeting, we'll be coming before this board to ask you to appoint two new members and to reappoint one current member to our Aging and Veterans Services Advisory Council for a three-year term that ends on June 30th, 2024. So I'd like to provide you now with a brief bio on each member that you'll be considering for appointment. So the two new members that we're requesting are Dennis Isaacson and Randy Dodds. Mr. Isaacson is a resident of District Two. He has an interest in helping advocate for more services for veterans and older adults, and an interest in helping to navigate the complex funding and regulation of federal, state, and county programs. He's an older adult and a former U.S. Naval Officer, and has served as a volunteer long-term care ombudsman in Benton County. He has a long professional career as well, but those are the things relevant to our Advisory Council. Mr. Dodds, he's a resident of District One in the Hillsborough area, and he feels passionately about the issues facing veterans and is interested in ensuring they're cared for, and that they have opportunities in the community for employment, as well as their benefits. Mr. Dodds is interested in using his U.S. Army Command and Staff experience in the Middle East and Africa to assist in assuring fairness and equity in county services. He is fluent in French and has a working knowledge of Japanese, Turkish, and German, which I thought was kind of fun. I'm also requesting reappointment of Bob Ludlam. This will be his third three-year term. He's in District Three. He's an active volunteer on our Advisory Council, formally serving on our Executive Committee. He also participates in and provides feedback on many of our educational activities that are available in the community, and is one of our greatest champions. He's out there promoting services all the time. So each of the appointees have attended at least one of our AVSEC meetings. They have interviewed with the committee as well as our staff, and the AVSEC has asked me and has unanimously voted to come before you to recommend them for approval and appointment. We do also have two additional applicants that are in the pipeline and are currently recruiting additional members. So if the applicants before you are appointed, as well as those currently in the pipeline at a future meeting, will have, still have one regular and six alternative positions available. And I'll take questions.
Great. Any questions or comments, such as your AOK thumbs up on this roster? Looky there.
Great, thank you.
Well done, both to the committee and to staff. Thank you very much, Ms. Miller.
Yes, thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Thank you. All righty, now we'll switch over to Mr. Joe Nelson, our Interim Director of Assessment and Taxation, with regard to appointments to the Board of Property Tax Appeals. Hey, hi there. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
So.
Good morning.
Oh, here we go. We have the whole trio. Aren't we lucky?
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. My name is Joe Nelson. I'm the Interim Director for Department of Assessment and Taxation, and today my purpose is to present the candidates that A&amp;T recommends for appointment to the Board of Property Tax Appeals. The term is one year, with duties consisting of hearing petitions for real market value, assessed value, maximum assessed value, and assessed, especially assessed value. Additional topics may be late filing petitions for personal property and real property returns. The recruitment period ran from April 6th through May 18th, 2021. Six applicants were received. We had one withdrawn, one new, and four return members. The demographics of the applicants were, one applicant did not self-identify. Of the remaining candidates, 50% of people are people of color, and 50% are women. I would like to commend Latricia Tillman from the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement for the excellent EDI training provided to the Board of Property Tax Appeals last year, and we'd like to perpetuate this as a regular element of our board training. Due to the COVID epidemic last year, a new remote hearing process was successfully administered, and that was keeping the board and the petitioners safe. Hearing will be conducted remotely again this upcoming year. The next step is, with board support, final approval of the slate of candidates on the board agenda will be on the board agenda in two weeks on September 28th. And I guess at this point, I'm open for questions and comments.
Commission members, are we all set on this slate? Yep, okay, you got five thumbs up and head nods. If I could ask a side question, and it's two related, I'm really kind of wondering how we might go about making participation on this committee a little bit more visible to our community members, insightful. Sometimes the descriptions just sound so dry. And, you know, part of what helps our system of democracy work is that government is funded to do the work that our community expects us or wants us to do. And so this Board of Property Tax Appeals, it doesn't sound very humanistic. But this is where, if people have real fundamental questions or qualms with what the assessment is, they have a body of peers to go to to make their case and to be heard. And so, you know, you don't have to have a doctorate in property tax in order to participate. And also, I may be a little wrong about this, but the, I think from other briefings, the time period of work for participating on this committee is pretty finite. And so I think those are all very promising attributes for a general community member, including our civic leaders, right, our alumni of our civic leaders who are trying to figure out, well, how could I start to participate and offer my skills and services? Frankly, for this committee, you don't have to have some special passion, right, or special expertise to just be a common sense thinker and being willing to listen and incorporate the information goes a long way. So, I don't know, maybe I'm saying too much here, but I just think that the description that we put on our own website and in our own committee material set is under our control. And I think we could do this particular committee a little bit better service by adding a little bit more of a human quality to it. Of course, we have to meet the state statute and all that other good stuff that already exists. So, anyway, sorry to be so long-winded with my own personal opinion.
I certainly appreciate that. That's very helpful, and we're certainly willing to work in tandem to accomplish these goals. We've been working with community engagement, and I think that's a really good avenue for us to continue with. So thank you.
I bet. I wish I'd known, you know, back in 2004 myself, because it's pretty lightweight.
Yeah.
But it plays a good role.
Chair, this is Margaret. I really appreciate the comments you've just put before us. I think you're absolutely right. I think we can do a better job of, in trying to do a better description of what people really would be doing and try to do it in a way that would be enticing for folks, to let them know that honestly, this is a great opportunity for someone to learn about property values and assessment, and that, you know, the requirements are pretty minimal, and that we would really encourage folks from all walks of life to participate in this avenue, part of the democratic process. So thank you.
Yeah, it's not as dry as you might think. You know, I learned a lot by going down and getting a tour of the whole department and seeing what people actually do. It's really quite interesting. So it's a great field, and this is a great start. So thank you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
All righty, well, that's it for the morning section of our agenda. We have three more items for the afternoon. Two, our first two of the three are executive sessions. So what I think I'd like to do at this point is make a recommendation that we go on lunch break until 1:00. But to set up the afternoon, I would like to, and Mr. Carr, I'm looking to you to make sure I do this properly, for the matter of convenience, I think it may be helpful if we can have a motion to, when we return at 1:00, to have a motion to enter into two back-to-back executive sessions. The first pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub E for real property negotiations, and then the second pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub D with regard to labor negotiations. Mr. Carr, is that a sound process for me to lay it out and get the?
That would be fine. Chair Harrington, if the board desires, the presenters for the first one could be available now, if you wanted to do that before lunch.
Oh, that'd be great.
Let me see if, they all said that they're ready. Ms. Angie asked me to check to anticipate that for you. So let me see if I can get them to come on right now, and we can maybe perhaps wrap that one up before lunch and shorten your afternoon.
That would be great. So while he's taking care of that, that would mean that we would have just one remaining executive session, and then have the HB 2001 middle housing presentation that much earlier.
This would be the real property one. Clerk Moss, should we go into a separate meeting to do this, or can we do this with this Zoom meeting?
We cannot do it with this Zoom meeting, so I would suggest we would make the motion to enter the executive session in this meeting, and then get off this link to the one that is in your calendars for the 1:00 PM start.
Are you clear on that, Mr. Carr?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Willie to adjourn into executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub E for real property negotiations, and I would like to, and seconded by Commissioner Rogers. After we exit that executive session, we're going to move right into a lunch break for an hour, and then we will return to another executive session. So I would ask that we also have the agenda be, after lunch, that we re-enter an executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub D for labor negotiations. Commissioner Willie's made the motion. Commissioner Rogers, would you be willing to second that?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Treese.
Will we be able to move up item number nine to?
Yes.
They'll be able to move up to. I'm sorry if I missed that.
Nope, nope. Yep, everything would move up a half an hour. Great. All those in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Anyone opposed? We'll now move on to executive session, and we'll have to go using the Zoom link that's in our calendars. Okay? See you on the other side.
Thank you, commissioners.